It's 9:00 AM. Good morning. Welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of September 8, 2021. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen.
Here.
Eric Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner, I'm absent and staff is represented by Monawitt, Fox, and Montes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. We have had requests to speak on item number one on the consent agenda, which will be moved to the regular agenda with opportunity for public comment at that time. Our staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I'll ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature in order to wish on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of a meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your microphone and begin speaking. So, right now, on items not on the agenda, I do see Mr. Ron Snow with his hand raised. So it's one second while I put on the timer. So, Mr. Snow? Go ahead. You will have five minutes.
Hi, good morning. I am speaking on on the letter that was sent pertaining to the decision letter that was made for Hickox Road, which was west of Skyline Boulevard. That was at your last meeting. And in that, I was pretty sure that the board, that the decision was made that the fence that was being allowed along Hickox Road, which was a six-foot fence, about 25 feet setback, was going to have openings and allow wildlife to pass through it. But the decision letter that I received on September 1st doesn't, I don't see that in there. And I was just wanting to call that to your attention that I thought was agreed and discussed, that that fence would have openings or have a series of offsets where wildlife could migrate across that without being hindered by the fence. That's really just, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Hopefully that can be corrected. Thank you.
Would Steph like to address this comment?
About that, yes, it certainly was intended to be included. And I thought the draft that I looked at actually had that. I don't have the letter at my fingertips. I'm wondering if Janice might be able to pull it out and make sure that that got in there. If it didn't, we certainly will correct it.
Yes, it was also my impression that it was covered there. Are there any other requests to speak?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised at the moment.
Seeing no other requests, if there are no objections, we will close oral communications and move on to the consent agenda, which has, it includes two items, and I'd like to postpone the minutes of August 25th for additional corrections and move from consent, what is labeled here, item number one, the general plan conformity. And so, moving right to the regular agenda, we will start with item number one.
Item number one, owner, Peninsula Open Space Trust applicant, Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. File number PLN 2021-00256. Location adjacent to 1589 Higgins Canyon Road in Halfbom Bay. And our project planner this morning is Katie Faulkner. Katie?
Thank you, Janice. I can share my screen to show the presentation today. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right, great. Okay, good morning, commissioners and members of the public. My name is Katie Faulkner, and I'm a planner three with the Planning and Building Department. Under consideration today is a request by the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District to determine if the acquisition of seven parcels adjacent to the Johnston Ranch property in the unincorporated county conforms to the county general plan. The current owner of the property is Peninsula Open Space Trust, and the property is located along Higgins Canyon Road in the unincorporated midcoast. So, the district is proposing to purchase an undivided 59% interest in the subject property with post retaining the remaining 41%. After the purchase, the district plans to create a 644-acre upland portion of the property owned in fee by the district for the purposes of public recreation and coastal resources protection, and to create a 224-acre farm parcel to be owned by post or future sale to a farmer. As background information, the district has an open permit application submitted for the subject property for a lot line adjustment and parcel merger to accomplish creating of two different properties, but please note that that application is not under consideration today. All right. And after the property interest is purchased, the existing land uses will continue, and the upland portions of the property will be more actively managed by the district for conservation grazing, open space, habitat preservation, watershed protection, and future low-intensity public recreation such as trails. So here is a map of the subject properties. So, the proposed acquisition potentially implicates the following categories of the general plan policies: vegetative, water, fish, and wildlife resource policies, visual quality policies, park and recreation resource policies, and rural land use policies. As Steph finds that the proposed acquisition does not conflict with any of the relevant general plan policies as the anticipated uses of open space, habitat preservation, conservation grazing, agriculture, watershed protection, and public trails are generally compatible with the general plan policies. And as far as environmental review, a determination that the proposed acquisition of the property conforms to the county general plan is exempt from the environmental review under the common sense exemption that the California Environmental Quality Act applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. And any future action on the subject property would be subject to the appropriate sequel requirements at the time. All right, so, her recommended findings, recommendation is that the planning commission find that the proposed purchase by the district of the Johnson Ranch property conforms to the county general plan. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Let's do commissioners have questions for staff? Let's start with Commissioner Hansen.
No questions at the moment.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
I just have the two question and clarification for Katie. What's the total acreage of the property? And can you elaborate on the common sense exception?
So, the total acreage is 868 acres. And common sense exemption, let's go back to that. It's just that the proposed action wouldn't have any, you know, any potential for causing significant effect on the environment. And that's because right now we're just considering a property acquisition. We're not considering any application to develop, or even, we're not considering the application for a lot merger, for a lot line adjustment and lot merger right now. It's a very simple application to just look at the purchase.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gupta.
I really don't have any question for Katie. I had already clarified some things that she responded to, and that made things much clearer to me. So, thank you, Katie.
Could I ask at this point for some clarification on general plan conformities, including review of LCP policies? As I look back in my time on, well, just the last two years, the general plan conformity, there has been no mention of the LCP except for the most recent one, the Big Wave South Parcel. There was a couple of mentions in it there. So what is the county process on this?
So, the general plan certainly includes the local coastal program, it being subset in area plan of the general plan. So, really, the acquisition, the request for general plan conformity should also address local coastal program compliance. And I think the, if that was not robustly discussed in the report, it's because we, I think, recognize that this is simply an acquisition with very little impact, potential for impact, and that the analysis of compliance with the general plan policies also provide, you know, the functional equivalent, if you will, of LCP analysis.
Thank you. So, at this point, let's open public comment, and I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Nuhan.
Chair, I'm going to put up my timer. I do see one hand raised for this item. My one hand raises from Ms. Lenny Roberts. Lenny, please go ahead, unmute your microphone, and begin speaking.
Hey, good morning, commissioners. And thanks for already asking the question. Chair Ketchum, so I apologize for sending this in so late, and also for I left out one important sentence in my letter to you. I hastily wrote last night. First of all, we support, we completely support the proposed project that you're just reviewing the general plan conformity for. We've been in many conversations with the Open Space District and Post over the years as they were planning how to, you know, move forward with partial public ownership and partial the part of the property that will remain with Post. Post intends to sell to the farmer, which is the Juicy fam, John Juicy, who his family has farmed this land for three generations, and we're very supportive of that continuation. So, we don't have any argument with the proposed project, which we're not considering, just the general plan conformity. And I should have noticed this before and raised it in prior prior general plan conformity determinations, but it suddenly occurred to me that, wait a minute, we know that the local coastal program is considered, the land use plan policies of the local coastal plan are considered part of the general plan, and it's specifically referred to in the Coastal Act, which I cited in my comment letter. I think it would be, well, it's very clear, and it doesn't, the functional equivalency thing, I have not, I have not seen any reference to that in the county's own regulations. So I would just, functional equivalent seems, I think would be more prudent for the county to, in not only for this one, but future general plan conformities to also look at conformity with the LCP land use plan policies. So, thank you for consideration, and I don't want to repeat again that we are supportive of this project. It's simply a matter of, you know, covering all the bases as far as general plan conformity. Thank you.
First, I don't see any more hands raised for this item, Chair.
So, we did have a letter from someone, Ron Sturgis wanted to speak. I don't see, I don't see him here in attendance. So so with that, if there are no objections, I will close public comment at this time, and move on to commissioner discussion. Commissioner Hansen.
I don't find too much to discuss on this. If everybody else doesn't have any further questions, I'll be happy to make a motion for approval.
All right, Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No comment, as long as the concern from Lenny Roberts regarding the land use, a specific information included, I wouldn't have any problem either.
Commissioner, may I ask for clarification? That would, are you saying that a continuance is in order? That you feel a continuance is in order, or that it should be?
Thank you, Commissioner Ketchum, for clarifying that. Well, I'm saying it that if the way it is now, the general plan conformity and land use is not clear, I think we should add some sort of like clarification before approving this. If we cannot do it now, maybe a continuous will be in order.
Okay, Commissioner Gupta.
To me, it looks like a good project, and I'm in support of it.
I support the project as well. I'm not sure how clear, quite how this will go, but Commissioner Hansen, would you like to make a motion?
I noticed Steve raised his hand. Would be all right for him to speak.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
That's all right. Thank you, Commissioner Hansen and Chair Ketchum. I just wanted to comment on the discussion about LCP compliance. I agree with Lenny that we do need to address that, and we need probably to do a better job of that in the future. However, I also think it's important to recognize that under state law, the general plan conformity determinations need to be completed with, I think it's 40 days? Forty, yeah, Tim's nodding his head. So, that's really a quick turnaround. And so, it limits our ability to write exhaustive analyses. That's not to say that we shouldn't include findings for LCP compliance, and I don't think it's necessary to add those at this point for this project. I think our general findings for general plan conformity are applicable here. But I will make sure that general plan conformities for projects in the coastal zone have a little bit more discussion of LCP compliance in the future for other projects, if that helps.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Commissioner Hansen, would you like to make your motion?
Okay, for PLN 2021-00256, the commission finds that the Johnson Ranch Properties acquisition conforms to the San Mateo County general plan.
By a second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Motion passes for zero. Thank you very much. Awesome. Moving on to item number two. Staff will introduce the item.
Steve, I'm not sure if you want to say something before item number two.
Yeah, thank you, Janice. The planner, Camille Young, had an emergency situation, and she is supposed to be on within the next 10 to 15 minutes. So, if it's okay with the chair, I'll jump ahead to the other items on the agenda, and hopefully she'll be back and ready to present by the time I'm done.
Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you. So, as far as correspondence goes, Janice forwarded a letter from the Zumaes, or the appeal that has been filed by the Zumaes of the action to deny their project. So, that will be going to the board. We don't have it set on the agenda quite yet, but I anticipate that it could happen as soon as September, not the 22nd, I guess would be the first meeting in October. So I'll keep you posted on that.
I got a question.
Sure.
The last time something went to the board where the planning department approved and the commission disapproved, there was really no way for the commission to be representative. And how is this going to be approached? Because it's an appeal of our decision.
Correct.
We're not, and we're not going to be quote representative, unquote, there.
Well, I think Tim would object, but I'd be happy to let you write the staff report, Mr. Hansen. You know, we haven't internally come to a conclusion as to what our staff recommendation will be. And you raise a good point. I'm glad that we have an opportunity to discuss this, because the last thing that staff wants to do is, for lack of a better term, we use a phrase, pull the rug out from under the commission. But at the same time, staff's job is to remain objective in terms of our analysis with, you know, the project's consistency with the various regulations. Now, we drafted findings that you adopted at your direction, and I think there's a high likelihood that we will recommend that the board support those findings. But I can't at this point eliminate the possibility that staff would always report to the board as accurately as possible what the planning commission did, but have a recommendation that differs from that planning commission action. So, like I said, it's, I don't know if it's going to happen this time. I don't think so. It has happened in the past. There's the potential it could. And I think if it were to unfold in that way, that we'd make an extra effort this time around to make sure that you were informed and, you know, got a copy of the staff report. And I think all commissioners, Tim, you could correct me if I'm wrong, would have an opportunity to participate in that hearing as a member of the public, or I don't know if even to represent the commission. Tim, could you comment on that?
Yeah, well, just to be careful, for me, is I don't violate any Brown activities, because, you know, I can't discuss my feelings with any other two commissioners, and trying to get, you know, I had not just one with the fire, as has been represented there, but I had, you know, seven. And I don't know how many did or did not support any of those, and I can't discuss this. So, I find it, you know, really hard to, you know, I like to hear Tim's comments on this, basically.
Sure. All the various parties to the administration of our land use regulations in the county have roles to play. And the planning commission, I think, is in a very unique position to have the experience of both being a body from which decisions are appealed and a body to which decisions are appealed. You get to kind of see it from both sides. And in the same way that you would want staff to provide you with a staff report that analyzes the consistency of a project with the regulations and accurately reports decisions made by the ZHO or the Design Review Committee or others, that you need to have trust that the report that you're receiving is exactly what it purports to be. In other words, the independent analysis of the professional planners in the planning department who have to administer these rules and apply them to multiple projects in a fair and consistent way. And so, the department has worked really hard to make sure that when you get a report of an action by a lower body that is appealed to you, that you can read the staff report and disagree with it, if you like. But you also can trust that it is not simply the best shot at defending the decision that was made by the decision maker below. It's the analysis of a person who's gone to school for planning, who's been trained in land use planning, and an administration of the department that works really hard to make sure that over a long term, the rules are applied in a fair and consistent way. But the most important thing that each body can do at each stage, design review, ZHO, planning commission, ag advisory committee, everybody, is to make findings that are sustainable to the body to which the appeal is being made. So you have to write your findings in such a way that are convincing and authoritative to the best you can to the body to whom the appeal might be made. And we do this, of course, even at the board level, we have to do it with an eye toward what a court might say about the action that was taken on the last appeal. So, in that sense, no one's really in a position to do more than their task, which is to accurately report the record and the findings of each body at each stage, and then give their best independent analysis of whether they believe that it's sustainable over a long term for that interpretation to be the rule for land use in San Mateo County. And that, I think, will happen both when the department does the ordinary thing of recommending that the decision of the lower body be upheld. But it also happens sometimes when the body, when the department makes a staff report that recommends that changes be made to the project and it be approved, or that different findings be made. It's a matter of making sure that each body gets a staff report that addresses its concerns and potentially anticipates where they want to go by way of the findings they make, whether to approve or deny.
Yeah, well, and I understand where you're going. At the same time, I think one of the unwritten findings of that project was there were so many problems as accumulation, it wasn't developable in that, those spots, and there are no specific findings. Generally, summing that up, you know, it basically says, you know, there's a fire thing, which was what they're appealing. You know, there were other little things in there, but I just wanted to be, you know, we all had our take on it, and it was really an accumulation of just everything, I think, is what got us there.
I recognize that, and of course, we struggled mightily to synthesize what we heard the commission to say into action that we believe was supported by a majority of commissioners. That is not an easy task. It would have been, it would have been great if, if the specific findings for denial had been proposed in the first meeting so that we could have crafted a document that met all of your expectations. But to a degree, we have to, we have to synthesize multiple inputs, not all of which are necessarily as consistent as even you might think they are once we try to put pen to paper. So, a real effort was made to make sure that we were accurately reporting where we thought the vote was to give direction to bring back proposed findings. And that's, it will never be a perfect process, but it will always be a sincere one.
And I have no expectations for it to be a perfect program, but I just want to note that when the appeal comes up, it wasn't a narrow decision on a specific topic. on a specific topic. We had a lot of discussion. And we, we all shook our heads on, on what we voted on, but doesn't mean that it was limited to that either.
Well, unfortunately, I, I can't craft findings that do that. I, I can't prepare findings that are sustainable in court that say that it's, it's an amalgamation of multiple concerns. We do our best to specify what the bases were. And, you know, we, we will work in the future to get better clarity before we likely take direction to come back with findings for denial so that we have greater clarity and meet your expectations about what, what it should say. But we, we have constraints as well that we have to operate under about the detail that we have to include.
Yeah, I agree with you with what you're saying about the findings, but who's ever representing us also could say there's, it was a lot of other emotional things going on. You know, and, and I just wanted to be sure that, you know, my, my feelings got projected somehow or represented it.
I hear you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to comment.
So I see Camille's here. Should we switch over or should we continue and finish up this portion?
I recommend that we go back to item two. I know the applicant's been waiting patiently, so. And then I can continue the director's report when we're done with that.
Okay, thank you. So, item two.
Item two, owner applicant, Tim Parsi. File number PLN two zero two zero dash zero zero four five zero. Location two zero zero six Valamar Street, Moss Beach, and our project planner is Camille Young.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for waiting for me. And your patience. Let's see, so getting started. Do a full screen. The project is located in two thousand six Valamar. And you can see by this screen actually that there's, Valamar's like, there's a lower section and an upper section, so they're on the lower section. And they're very close to the coast as, and Cabrillo Highway, as you can see here. It's also located within the Cabrillo Highway County Senate Corridor. And there, I just wanted to point out that this is Niagara, where Niagara Avenue, where there is coastal lots. Oh, sorry. And I also wanted to point out, there are some houses in the area that are developed, but there's a vacant lot to the south. And then MWSD owns this parcel here to the west and north. So Tim Parsi requests to build a fourteen hundred thirty-eight square feet, three-story residence. It is a non-conforming lot at three thousand four hundred and eight square feet, triangular in shape, where five thousand is required in the S seventeen zoning district. The lot width is also narrower than the fifty feet that is required. So with that, there's certain exceptions that the applicant is seeking, such as a twelve-foot combined side setback where fifteen is required, a seventeen-foot front setback where twenty is required, and an off-street parking exception to waive one covered space where the applicant plans to provide one covered and one uncovered spot on site. This is the parcel right now. There's a non-conforming residence. You can see it's got a very minimal left-side setback. I believe there's no garage, but I'll let Tim Parsi clarify that. This is the proposed project. There are some encroachments which are actually allowed. This is a deck that encourages just a little bit into the right-side setback. It's allowed under section sixty-four oh six. And this is the one covered, sorry, one, yeah, covered parking space. This is the one uncovered parking space. And also of note is a very large Monterey Cypress tree up here, and also one on the other side of the property line at the rear. And there are some, these are the encroachments. This is a trellis structure in the front setback. And also this deck wraps around to the front entry and reduces the combined side yard setback. These are the two trees and their approximate drip line canopies. And the applicant does plan to protect them during construction. So just to give you an idea of how the project is designed, there's a first level with the garage, a lower floor plan under the main floor, and then an upper, a smaller story of two hundred and fifty-three square feet. So the main level, the lower level, the upper level, which is smaller. And I did want to point out that the upper level is smaller because it is visible from the Cabrillo Highway Senate Corridor. And the colors that are being proposed do blend in with the canopied nature of the area, and there's natural siding, natural appearing siding being proposed. So in terms of compliance with the Design Review District Guidelines, the Design Review, the CDRC did recommend approval of the project that the arrangement, placement, amassing of forms meets the Design Review standards. They did add a condition requiring minor design changes and changes to exterior lighting to be more compliant with the standards. The house is located in the Cabrillo Highway Senate Corridor. The project would be more visible than the existing house. The existing house is white. I'm sorry. The existing house is white and is minimally visible. This project, like the existing house, would be screened by the existing trees. Exterior materials and, and colors would blend with the surrounding vegetation. The small footprint of the third story, the overall smaller size of the house, it's only a fourteen hundred square foot house that's being proposed here, minimizes visibility from Cabrillo Highway. In terms of the findings for the use permit and the non-conforming use permit, the planning commission is required to find that all opportunities, amongst other findings, the planning commission must find that all opportunities require additional contiguous land in order to achieve conformity with the zoning regulations have been investigated and proven to be infeasible. The owner has provided a letter stating the reasons why, or stating how they, they considered the purchase of other properties and why that wasn't feasible at the time, including a lack of interest and just a high sale price for the north parcel. Another finding is that the proposed development is nearly in conformance with design regs as is reasonably possible. And there's a wraparound deck, as I explained, that connects the front of the house to the rear deck, which is necessary for access. It's, it's quite close to what is required. It's only three feet off. Terms of the front setback, there's a trellis structure that, you know, arguably could be an architectural feature that could be allowed under the zoning regs. But I'm just including it here, just, just to be safe. And yes, and so based on that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the design review permit, the coastal development permit, the non-conforming use permit, and the off-street parking exception for file number PLN two thousand twenty four fifty by making the findings in the staff report and the, with the conditions listed in attachment A. Thank you so much. And staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff? We'll start with Commissioner Hanson.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Yeah, I'd like to know for, for how many out of the non-conforming requirement or the conforming requirement, how many does this project conform to or non-conform to?
In the staff report, staff lays out how the project conforms to the S seventeen district, and it conforms to the floor area, the lot coverage, two of the setbacks, two out of the four of the setbacks, conforms with height. So it conforms with a majority of the S seventeen.
Isn't that like about fifteen or sixteen conforming requirement that the, the project need to conform to?
I don't know the number. I mean, if you count the LCP policies and the design review standards, I'm sure it's even more than sixteen.
I, I think maybe the better way to look at it, it would be, well, what are the number of non-conformities they're requesting approval of? And I, I think as Camille laid out, it's limited to the three-foot deck on the side of the house, which encroaches into the standard setback, and then the trellis feature on the front, but, which, you know, and what else, Camille?
And the parking space, the covered.
And the parking space. So there's.
And the, and the square footage, right, Steve? The three thousand four A were five thousand square.
Oh, so, yeah, that gets a little confusing about the lot size. So with regard to the non-conforming lot size, you know, we have standards when you create a new lot. But we also have existing lots that were created before those standards were established that are smaller than the lots that we would allow to be created now. And so that's the situation here. This lot is non-conforming in size. There's really not much we can do about that. It's a legal lot created before the current size requirements were established. So, yeah, it's just an existing circumstance that can't really be changed with regard to lot size.
And it's already been, it's an improved and non-conforming parcel. It already has a house. So they're just simply replacing that house with another house that's also quite small.
Okay, Camille, the off-street parking exception, what is that?
So two parking spaces are required when you have two or more bedrooms. So instead of providing two covered parking spaces, they're providing one covered parking space and one uncovered parking space. So it shouldn't result in additional cars out on the street. This exception, it just simply waves the covered requirement of one space.
Okay, 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 great. Thank you, Camille.
Commissioner Gupta.
So in, in one of the, I believe in CDRC letters, it's, it said ten feet of combined side setback. Is it ten or twelve?
It's twelve, actually.
It's twelve.
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, well, maybe there was an error or maybe they have fixed it since then or revised it. Yeah.
I believe it was my error. Thank you.
Oh, really? All right, so that's twelve feet. And from the discussion, I understand that only, like, where, where is it kind of encroaching into twelve?
Okay.
Less than the fifteen feet.
So there's a minimum side setback for each side of five feet. But because the structure's over sixteen feet in height, there's also a fifteen-feet combined side yard setback. So in addition to the five minimum on each side, you have to add the left with the right, and those should add up to fifteen, but they only add to twelve.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is it, is it just portions that are kind of not meeting that fifteen feet or minimum five feet?
Yeah, it's really this deck, because this is actually considered conforming. It's, it's, it's really just the, sort of the narrow width of the parcel and needing this deck that goes from the front to the back.
Okay, so this orange, orange line that you have is, that is what would have been conforming, right?
Yes, with some exceptions that are allowed by the zoning regulations, yes.
Okay, okay. All right. But in the staff report, I think, or maybe I looked up on Google, there was a view shown, which is from the Cabrillo Highway of, of the, of how the, it would be visible, right?
It would be visible, and I should have included those pictures here. I can try to share the, the staff report. Hold on one second, let me find it. Anybody? Sorry, one second. Let me stop sharing for a second. Sorry, bear enough. Hold on a second, I have it here. Let me just. Sorry, one minute. Okay. Let me share back again. So this is Cabrillo Highway. Let me go up a little bit further. Yeah. So I think I went a little too far. It's, it's difficult to see the house. You have to kind of be at the right place. I'm sorry, I don't have that picture ready. But let me find it, and I don't, I don't know if you want to, to have the applicant speak to anything, and why, why don't I find it?
That's, that's fine.
We might be approaching it, actually.
Right. And the current structure that's there, the dwelling that's there, it's not visible at all?
It will. Oh, it, it is actually. It's a white structure. The main floor is visible. Yes.
The main floor is.
Yeah, I believe it's a two-story structure with an upper and a lower, and the main floor is visible. It's, I would say half shaded by a tree, and the rest is not screened. But I can find the picture for you, and if you want to let the applicant speak, and have that ready for you.
That's, that's fine. So going on to another question. So fourteen hundred and thirty-eight square feet residence size, that's all three stories, is that correct? Right. So what is the footprint on, on the lot?
Oh, the lot coverage.
Lot coverage, right.
It was compliant. It's thirty-five percent, and I believe it was just under thirty-five percent of the S seventeen.
Okay, okay. No, that's, that's fine. Don't look for that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I got the feeling. Thank you. Thank you. No more questions.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. So the California Coastal Trail is, is, this is the route of the coastal trail. I mean, it doesn't have signage yet, but this is really the only option on Valamar Street here, where the road width is limited by grade change on either side. And I'm concerned about the proposed landscaping outside the front fence in the right-of-way. It would seem that pedestrian use of the road shoulder should be a priority for the coastal trail. I understand this is a dead-end street with the turnaround, so maybe pedestrians are assumed to just walk in the travelway, but still, it seems like if they need landscaping outside a fence, the, the fence should be moved back to, that an encroachment permit shouldn't be issued for landscape, private landscaping in this, in this narrow area. That's my thought.
Yes, thank you for your comment. And after I received your comment, I discussed this with Diane Shu, who is also prohibiting landscaping in the right-of-way, and the applicant is, has already agreed to remove those four trees from along that, from along the front property line.
They've agreed to delete the landscape?
The four, I believe it was four trees that were proposed in that area along the front property line.
All right, thanks. And then also, I assume that the boilerplate requirement to incorporate compost or depth of six inches would not be required in any kind of root zone of a tree like this? Does that be automatically, you wouldn't make them do that, would you?
Those are just in the irrigated areas.
All right.
Subject to wheel-o.
And then the, the concrete washout area that can be relocated.
That has been relocated by the applicant. He's aware, and, yeah, he'll need to, to move it to a location. And if it's in the right-of-way, he'll need to seek an encroachment permit for that.
The, it's a little bit off base here, but I, I can't help but be aware of, you know, like I say, it's the coastal trail, and you walk along and the road is narrow, and I understand the houses along that street are not new, but there are fences there that are new and that are six feet tall, and it's just a complete barrier. You're walking on the coastal trail, and the, the coast is all blocked off. And so I appreciate this one, the fences to regulation, but. I don't know what else can be done as I understand the county operates on complaint-based basis first, you know. I, I, what would you call this, a, a six-foot fence on the property line? Is that a violation, whatever? But probably these things don't get reported because everybody that lives on that street has the same concerns and they don't care. So I don't know if staff had any suggestions on whether to just let this go or something that could be done. Also vegetation, for example, the, the vacant lot next door to this parcel is overgrown with invasive Pride of Madeira, which, which is also spilling out into the, even over the paved street. And whether, I mean, I understand resources are limited, coastal trail improvements won't be made. But you know, could someone prune those things away from the street to make it more trail user-friendly? Question mark.
So I'll take that. Thank you, Chair Ketchum. Yeah, so I, you know, we are complaint-based when it comes to enforcement for the most part on the coast. But if we, if our enforcement officers see something happening that's a concern, we, we can take action without a complaint. And you know, I, I think there are examples of situation where we have seen either fences or landscaping go up and they're blocking coastal views and we've taken action to address those. So really the best time to tackle those problems is when the landscaping first gets installed or the fence is first erected. Fences that have been there for a long time are a lot more difficult for our team to address. And we do try and avoid, you know, seeking out a resolution of fences that have been there for a long time and, you know, nobody's ever complained about them. That being said, I think if there is a significant public view that has been encroached upon illegally, we're happy to take a fresh look to evaluate whether it warrants action. I think it's a separate thing with encroachments in the right-of-way. Although Public Works probably has greater ability to go out there and just clear it themselves once it's on in the right-of-way. We can't go out on a private property and cut down some of these fences, but Public Works can remove things that have been, that are encroaching in the right-of-way. And we can pass on your concern about the, the vegetation spilling out and Public Works can either make the property owners take care of it or do it themselves. So we'll pass that on to Public Works.
Thank you. So does the applicant, Mr. Parsi, did you, did you wish to speak? Is he here?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I don't know what to speak about. Do you have any questions of us? I'm here, by the way, with our architect, Stephen Atkinson.
Do commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hanson? No? Commissioner Santa Cruz?
No.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes. Mr. Pars, Parsi?
Correct.
Am I pronouncing it correct?
You are. Thank you very much.
Okay. So how long have you owned this parcel or land?
Since October last year.
Okay. So you, you must have been aware that this is a kind of, for the lack of better word, odd-shaped lot.
Yes, for sure.
Okay. And so you had this plan in mind to build this home, right? To replace the, what is there and replace that, correct?
We, we definitely plan to replace it, yes.
Right, okay, okay. So and, and according to the staff report, that was, that was built many, many, many years ago.
1942, I think, yeah. It was built during World War II, which I find kind of amazing.
Okay, okay, all right, okay. And so, so is this going to be for your own use, the new home?
Yes, my, my wife and I intend to retire to that house.
I see, okay.
We love the sea air.
Okay, yes, it's, it looks like a very nice location.
Yeah, we feel.
Yeah, I, I couldn't quite get a feel for how big is the home in, not in terms of square footage, but what does it include?
So the current house, I believe, is 480 square feet on the main floor, which is level with Valamar. And then it has a rough basement that has no floor in it. It's just a dirt floor. And in that dirt floor area, that's where you have the furnace and the washing machine and the hot water heater. So the basic house is, I think actually is 438 square foot. That's what I remember. So it's pretty compact.
Yeah, so, so this new home, new home that you are proposing to build, what does that include?
Well, it's a lot bigger volume. It has two bedrooms downstairs and a closet for washing machines and things like that, and then also a bathroom. And then the main floor is basically fully open. So that's a kitchen, dining area, living area, all as one room. And then there's stairs to go up to a smaller studio. But it's, my wife and I are both designers and artists. So to us, it's a studio area at the very top with, by the way, we think an amazing view. So that's part of what we're very excited about. Here on the screen, I think you can see the main floor. So there's a kitchen to the right and a, an island, which is like a dining island as well as a kitchen island, and then the living area, and then the deck, as you see with the, the walkway to the south to get out to the deck.
Okay, okay.
And then we have a garage as well.
Okay, and the studio is the one that is on the.
On the top floor, yeah, the bottom. Yeah.
Okay.
And then it has, it has a small deck as well because, you know, the area over the living room is an area where you can walk out of the studio and, and get to that deck.
Okay. Okay. Great, great. That looks. That's fine. And did you work with any previous designs to like comply with the, say, the side setbacks or the front setback?
Yeah, we, with Stephen Atkinson, our architect, is sitting here. We went through quite a number of designs. And then I also read the, Steve and I read the regulations document. So this, the side, the stuff that infringes into the areas, as Camille pointed out, is basically following what we understand are the exceptions within the regulations. Same is true for the garage. The lot itself angles at an average of one in seven. And therefore, because of that, we believe is, we're allowed to put the garage in the front yard area. So basically, we tried to make it legal, less, because of our understanding of the regulation exceptions. But so that's where, that's why we came to this, is that we kept changing until we got it to be as legal as we thought we could.
Okay.
You guys know the regulations better than us, though, so.
Thank you, thank you. I have no more questions.
Thanks.
Okay, well, now open public comment on this item and I'll turn it over to Ms. Nuhan.
Thank you, Chair. We're now opening public comment for item number two. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. I do see one person with their hand up. I'm gonna go ahead and take this off of the share so I can put up my timer. One second. So I do see Mr. Ron Snow with his hand raised. Mr. Snow, please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Yeah, my, my, my question is I, with this being three stories, it just seems like this, you know, we're trying to protect the, the view of everything along the coast. And I'm not sure exactly where all this is. But the one question I have is being three stories, it seems to jack it up to the point where it'll be visible by everybody instead of, you know, having that coastal view that we sort of all want to have. So I, that's the one question I would have is, is is if, if this three stories is going to be a problem and if it is, maybe the consideration of a basement in two stories would be a better plan. Anyway, that was my, my main thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I do not see any more hands raised for this item, Chair.
Seeing that no additional members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on the item is now closed. Does staff wish to speak on any of the issues raised?
Actually, I have the photo ready that I can share of, from the staff report of the visibility of the current structure from Cabrillo Highway. This is the house actually from Valamar. And then this is the main level of the existing house from Cabrillo Highway. There is some screening provided by the trees. This would add a second level on top of the main level that is largely wood-sided. So it would blend in quite a bit. And honestly, you have to, this is a rather advantageous shot. You, you do have to sort of position yourself very specifically to get this shot of the house.
And I would also add that at this point, the highway is at a lower elevation and there's no views of the ocean available. So the proposed design wouldn't have any impact on views of the shoreline or ocean.
Okay, now we'll move on to commissioner comments and deliberation. We'll start with Commissioner Hanson.
Commenting on Mr. Snow's comments themselves. This house sits on a bench at nearly the same level as the highway. And then there's a bench below and then there's the ocean. And the property, three-story houses make the advantage of building really between the two benches. And being three stories really does not impact anybody's view of the ocean, particularly as this picture before us shows. Also, if when you walk that street, Valmar, it, it, there are a lot of great views on that street where there are no fences to block your view. I agree with our chair that some of those fences are solid, taller than me and you, you don't see things. But there are great views to be had. This is a lovely sight. I've given the awkwardness of the property. I think the design, this is actually fantastic. I think this is one of the better designs. I think the architect did a great job. I love the design in itself, but they really made use of it to provide still a smaller home. I mean, we went from a tiny house to a house that is still very small today. And I think they did a great job. Found all the things we need to approve being reasonable to get this up there. And unless I hear some comment from my fellow commissioners, I'm in favor of approving this.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No, no comment.
Commissioner Gupta. I concur with Commissioner Hanson. It, it looks, it's looked like a proportionate house for the lot that's there. And I think they have tried to make it such that it doesn't come in the view, scenic view part of it as much as they could. So I think it's, it's, it's a good project and I'm in support of it.
I support the project as well. So may we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Let's see. I'm finding the. Okay. I propose the Plaid Commission approve the design review permit, coastal development permit, non-conforming use permit and off-street parking exception, county file number PLN 2020 zero dash zero zero four fifty by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval listed in Attachment A.
Okay, I second.
You have it.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Chair Ketchum?
Hi.
Thank you, motion passed.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you very much. Enjoy your new home.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We also want to thank Camille for being a fabulous partner throughout this project.
Thank you all for your patience today.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll return now to the director's portion of the meeting. We, I think we have correspondence?
Thank you, Chair Ketchum and commissioners. I, I don't have any additional correspondence to report. So moving on to our next meeting. We are not planning this study session, but we do have two items currently on the agenda with the potential for maybe some more. We've got a new single-family residence on Ocean Boulevard in Moss Beach coming before you as well as an appeal of a grading and tree removal permit for site improvements in Portola Valley. So moving on to the director's report portion of the agenda, I just will remind the board that we have the acceptance of the coastal commission's modifications to the ADU regulations going to the board on September 14th. And I expect that they will accept our recommendation to accept those modifications. And at that point, I believe the new regulations will take effect 30 days after that. No, I will correct myself there because we need to report to the coastal commission that we have accepted the modifications. And the coastal commission needs to determine that that action was legally sufficient. Once they do that, the, the regulations will take effect. And then before Commissioner Santa Cruz was on, before the meeting started this morning, we were speaking a little bit about some of the new state laws regarding housing that are coming forward. And they significantly expand the amount of residential development that can occur on a single-family lot by a matter of right. And when I say by a matter of right, what I mean is there is no discretionary approvals involved. So these projects would not need to come before the planning commission. And these are the types of projects that currently would be required to come to the planning commission in some senses. So the, they're awaiting the governor's signature, at least two of the most significant ones. And assuming the governor will sign it, the county and many other local jurisdictions will need to figure out, you know, what that means for us and how we will implement these new standards. So more to come on that, certainly interesting times that we're working under. You know, in addition to having to respond to these state laws, we also have to update our housing element, which is another state requirement. And so we're working on that. And so a lot of matters related to housing and construction of housing in the county are sure to come before you in the near future. So I will do my best to keep you posted on these new laws and regulations as they move forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about them. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
If I could just make a comment. If I could just make a comment, you know, I have no objection to have more housing on the look on the existing lots that we have now. And, you know, it was, like I said earlier, it's a design from a period of California of low population and and a different aesthetic of the time. But at the same time, as you jam more people onto existence, square feet, you've got infrastructure problems. And the one I really worry about because the one that really riles everybody up is traffic. And that is a manageable thing, but you have to plan for it. And too often, we build and then try to figure out how to plan for it then eventually, hopefully, money has found the bill. And that's just backwards. And, you know, it's better to think now where we get the infrastructure in place because it's coming, whether we like it or not, it's in place. It's, you could just see it, those are my comments.
Any other comments or questions?
I had
Go ahead.
I had a question for Steve. I see that there's a new updated budget that would be presented to the Board of Supervisors. Just, does that in any way adversely impact your hiring, filling up the positions?
No, thank you for that question, Commissioner Gupta. Yes, you know, as part of the county's normal budget cycle, we typically true up the budget that was passed in July, in September, we call it the September revisions. And this time around, you know, some of the corrections that are taking place as part of the September revisions are, you know, intended to address some of the key issues at the time, the high priority priorities for the county, as you can imagine, you know, addressing the impacts of the pandemic, dealing with housing and homelessness. And so they, you know, I think the changes that are being put forth really try and establish or put more resources towards those priority issues. But they're not taking any resources away from the Planning and Building Department, one of my knowledge, other departments to do that. So there are no significant changes that will affect the work we do in planning and building.
Great, okay. I'm glad to hear that because I was looking at how many positions they are eliminating. I went into some of those areas, but they were not, at least I couldn't see anything in planning or building, okay?
No, and I'm making a strong push for more staff, so wish me luck in that regard.
Okay, yeah, wish you all the best. And my next question really is about this California. I'm, I'm missing the word, the commission meeting that's ongoing right now.
Oh, the postal commission meeting?
Right, right, is there anything there for us?
No, I scan the agenda, I typically go through the agenda on a monthly basis. Nothing in San Mateo County of significance, but you know, there are always are items that may be of interest just as it relates to San Mateo County. Because other counties are doing things or facing issues that are similar to the ones that we face. So I didn't see anything in this month's agenda that I thought, well, that, that would, that's one that we should be paying attention to. But I encourage the commissioners, if this is of an interest to you, keeping track of the Coastal Commission agendas and tuning in for those items that interest you, you can really learn a lot by participating in those meetings. So I wouldn't venture to say there's nothing of interest in the agenda this round, but nothing specific to San Mateo.
Thank you, Steve.
Certainly.
Steve, driving along through the coast side over the past month, I've noticed a lot of building, more than usual. I also noticed a lot of story poles, so are we expecting to see things coming from them or are there minister of approvals coming up? Or I, I was just surprised the number of places out there were story poles.
Interesting. Well, I think our design review committee has been busy. I do know that our permit volumes county-wide continue to be quite high. So, you know, what's specifically occurring on the coast in terms of the rate of development? I don't have the data at my fingertips, but I, we do monitor that because under the regulations, under our local coastal program, we can't authorize construction of more than forty units per year. And I know that we keep an eye on that and from what I've heard so far, we're still quite a ways from reaching that point. Doesn't mean we won't hit it next year, though, by what you're observing. So perhaps Chair Ketchum has information, I don't. But I just think that that's a general trend throughout the county is there's a lot of folks looking to improve their properties.
I got a question. I just need to be refreshed of it. Once they get approval, is there a time limit they have to have construction started or then expires or what?
Yes. So for most permits that are, that involve design review, the permit duration is five years. And within that five-year period, you must pull a building permit and begin construction. Once you have actually started your construction under a valid permit, you don't need to extend it, you've vested it, if you will. So as long as you've done significant work to commence the project you've been approved for, then the permit remains valid. But you need to start within five years.
So some of these things could have been approved years ago and they're just getting around to doing it, okay?
That could be, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question about dark sky compliant lighting that we see in conditions of approval. How is it defined and where does the authority come from? I don't see it in the zoning regs or the LCP, the term. This is an example, all of a condition of approval, all exterior lighting shall be designed and located so as to confine direct rays to the subject property and glare and surrounding area. All site lighting shall be dark sky compliant. So I would also like a definition of glare. And you don't have to answer me today, but I mean, this has just been, I keep, you know, I see this and the fact that this kind of detail is not in the zoning regs, I'm glad to see it. But I'm just curious where it comes from and what some of these definitions are.
Thank you for those comments. I agree, you know, crafting conditions that are unclear with the lack proper, you know, definition of terms is problematic. And so I think that's an observation that is something that's worth me taking back to staff to talking about this. Just with regard to where you find the basis in the regulations, I think it's we typically rely on the visual resource policies and also on some of the design standards. I think there might be something in the design guidelines and design standards related to light. But certainly, I think there's room for improvement in both our regulations and conditions about exactly what we need in that regard. So we'll attempt to do better in future reports.
But I don't know if you can answer this, what is glare? I had assumed that it meant if you're looking at the light and a light bulb is hitting your eyeball, that that's glare, but maybe it means something else as well.
I, I think, I I don't know, honestly, but I, I think depending on where you're positioned on the light, right? Because almost all fixtures, you know, if you walk under it, you probably can see, see it. So it's, I think, a matter of, well, where's the vantage point from? And I think generally, in the past, you know, the dark sky compliant, I think that's relatively new term. And I think in the past, what we focused on is what you find in the first part of the condition, which is that the rays of light should be directed such that they don't spill out on the property. And what that generally means is, yeah, there's some sort of shading fixture that would keep the direct rays from going beyond the boundary. Now, yeah, I think glare would maybe be with the fixture itself if it's not properly containing the light such that it is truly downward and but I, I think it's somewhat of a subjective term that we probably need to be more careful about using in our conditions.
Yeah, I, I thought dark sky compliant, the way they're using it, shall be dark sky compliant, that that there was maybe some state law defining what this was, I mean, I didn't know where this was coming from. Sounds good, but yeah, it sounds like, and the fact that you would like to go confer before answering this, it sounds like something we should, we should do.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Talking about glare, I had a whole different definition than either of you were mentioning. I thought of the reflective light of the downward pointing, it glares back up, lights up everything.
Oh, yeah, interesting, yeah. Okay, anybody else, comments, questions? Seeing no further business, the meeting is now adjourned, thank you.
Thank you all. Take care.